For our regular council meeting on December 8th, 2016. Appreciate your attendance on what is a pretty crisp night out there. Of course, this is our last regular meeting, full meeting, with council members Grabit and Manning with us. It's good to have them with us and certainly we appreciate their service through the years, four years for Mr. Grabit and 12 for Mr. Manning. Well, thank you.
Appreciate it.
When you show up on the other side of the dais.
I'm trying to have fun.
I'm still gonna probably call on you to lead us in. This is what I'm about to do right now, if you don't mind. All right, if everyone will please stand for a location.
Father, we've come to you now, Lord, we just want to say, Lord, we thank you for all these years that you've let me have the honor of working these men and ladies and all the other workers and all the taxpayer boys. And, God, we thank you for the 12 years you've been left outside of all of us. And, God, watch over them, Lord, when we're not here. And, God, we thank you for everything you did. Do you give thanks to God? Thank you. Bye.
Our quiet allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. Have the roll call. Here. 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 All right, we have a couple of different presentations tonight on the agenda. Before we get to that, I would like to recognize a few special guests. State Senator Todd Gardner is here. Thank you for being with us tonight. We also have council member-elect Brian Williams, council member-elect Mr. Thornton. Thank you all for being with us as well. Again, at this time, it looks like the first of the presentations will be the Tennessee American Fire and Rescue Firefighter Assistance Group.
Thank you, Mayor. Again, representatives from Tennessee American Fire and Rescue Company and also the representatives from our East Ridge Fire Department. Back several months ago, we applied for a $500 grant to assist our firefighters in maybe some equipment or things that they may need. And we were fortunate enough to be selected by Tennessee American to receive that money. And our firefighters are going to be using that for protective hoods. And I asked them of them to come tonight and show you exactly what that is, that that money's gonna go to. So, do you want to say anything about that?
So, this is our inaugural program for the firefighter support grant, and we're really excited to be doing this. And especially right now, it's very timely with what's going on with all the fires in our area of the country. So, this is a $500 grant, as Amanda said, and it will go, it can use for equipment or training, whatever the needs are for the departments. Glad to help this one.
The money that we're gonna be accepting from the Tennessee American Fire and Rescue Grant, we're gonna be replacing our MOLX hoods. These hoods, we change out after every fire to make sure the guys have a new clean hood ready for the next call. There's a lot of articles going on about cancer, carcinogens, and stuff like that with the hoods that hold it. So, we're seeing a lot of cancer around the neck of fighting today. So, it's very important to us to be able to have an opportunity to have more hoods so we can do that change out to prevent that from our firefighters.
All right, Mayor and Councils, if you'd like to come down here with us, and they'll present the check to us.
This direction or this direction?
Yes, there you go. Y'all walk up, y'all walk up behind me. Get in the rhythm. Go ahead, get in. Y'all get in there, too. If you're Todd, go to the back. Todd, step, Todd, step forward. Hang on. All right, everybody, get everybody ready. We'll take a bunch of them, one, two, seven. One, two, and three. Bear with me now. Just do me one favor, everybody close your eyes and on three, open them. One, two, three. That way, nobody blinked in there. Good job, thank you.
Ladies, thank you again for being here. We appreciate it very much. All right, the next round of presentations will be Christmas parade awards.
Thank you, Mayor, appreciate it. Folks, again, another wonderful parade that we always have. Of course, couldn't do it without our volunteers. And I do want to recognize some of those volunteers. They had the hardest job of all. Not only did our folks who lined up everyone to make sure that everyone's in the right order, but somebody had to judge this, and thank goodness it wasn't me. So, I don't see Carrie Cook here unless she snuck in. She is one of our judges, she's been at the past couple of years. But if Patricia Cassidy and Mr. Miller, if you would come down here, please. Now, you know why I made sure you were here.
So, thank you.
Oh, thank you. Appreciate it.
That was nice.
Well, I think we ought to give it to you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, and thank you all for doing that. And, of course, each year, we do have someone who kicks off the parade for us. And unfortunately, that job has to come with me because it's always a hard decision as to who would best represent our East Ridge Christmas parade. But this year, it kind of wasn't a hard decision. I started out, believe it or not, doing a Christmas parade when I was in sixth grade, and it was still a day parade. And so, I've been doing this parade on and off for a number of years. But when I got to high school, I got to march in it, in a marching band, and, of course, that was always fun. Got to be, you know, the center of attention. And even for a little while, I led the band as the drum major. But the person that did that for me was Mr. Mannig. He's the one that believed in me enough to be able to do that and give me the confidence enough to be able to do some of the things like I do today, like public speaking and getting to our folks. And he was someone that was in this parade for a number of years. He started, I believe, his first parade was 1993, maybe, 1993. It was my eighth grade year, it was his first year at East Ridge High School. So, he's always been a figure in that parade, but this year, fortunately, he was not. He passed away back several months ago. But we wanted to honor him because of he was such a figure in the parade. So, I will ask his wife, Diane, and his daughter, McCall, will come down here. They've helped represent him, and they did a fantastic job, along with the little granddaughter, Holden, but she's not here today, she had to go back home. But I wanted to give this to you all, to remember your time doing this for us, and I do appreciate, you know. And McCall was always taller than me even when she was in sixth grade. Thank you all so much. We will never forget. Thank you, I really appreciate all that, folks. Okay, now on to the prizes. Again, I'm so glad I didn't have to judge this because I have to prove it. But we have two different categories. We had a category for education, which is our school groups and our scout groups, and then we have one that's just everybody else. And so, there's a lot more people in the everybody else category, so it's always okay competition. And again, glad I didn't have to judge it, but we're gonna start backwards from third place. And, oops, our third place. Our third place winner this year is Camping World RV. Is anyone here from Camping World tonight? Okay, it would be, let's think, I've caught traffic. Okay, well, third place was Camping World. Second place, and I do see it represented, I hope, here, Ginger Brown's Academy of Performing Arts. First place, and I do hope it's represented here because I cannot believe how they built this, and I was hoping they would win something for it. First place for that awesome pirate ship was the Alhambra Shrine Temple.
One more, ma'am.
Thank you.
It was an awesome ship.
Yes, it was. The only group that got a perfect score, by the way, so that pirate ship, I think, sent one of them out. All right, now, this is the exciting part because education, they don't get a trophy, they get actually a cash prize. And it's something that we started so a long time ago, even before I came, to encourage the school groups, scout groups, to participate, and they always did a fantastic job. So, we're gonna start backwards and work our way to the front because I didn't tell anybody what place they want, I just told them they want a prize. So, for third place, I'd like to call up the East Ridge High School JROTC, and they won a $100 cash prize.
You two steps in the middle, please. Everybody else, just come gather around. I'm not worried about the guys, I'm gonna make sure I see the girls. One more. Thank you, folks.
On behalf of East Ridge High School and the JROTC Department, we want to thank Amanda Miller and the City of East Ridge personally. Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, Mr. Mayor, our kids study government, but they don't get the chance to be among government very often, and I'm not a bashful person, as you can tell. I don't want you to get up from your seats, but if I could stage the kids in front of their government and take a photo of them in front of their government, may they approach the guy?
Absolutely, yes, sir.
Do me each try to find a spot in between those name tags for me, please. Will you get a shot? You see how far I can get? This is government in action for them, and that's what I want to do. Get in between the name tag, there's one in the middle, fill that middle gap. Curious, there you go. I'm sorry, ladies and gentlemen, but this will be a memory for a lifetime for these kids. Please, sir, make a professional shot.
They're not professionals. If I shoot enough, something good turns out. Here we go. Let me get the seal here.
Yeah, for these, move just a little bit left. There you go.
And let's do one more. Thank y'all so much.
Thank you.
Congratulations, guys, you did a fantastic job, and ladies. All right, for our second place, and they win a $200 check. That will go to our Cub Scout Pack 3016. Y'all come on up here. There you go, congratulations.
Everybody look right at this, if you step up and you're next to them, you stay there and you come up.
There you go.
There you go. There you go. One more. Thank you.
And our first place, and they win a $300 check. That will go to Belmore Christian Academy. Do I have anybody there? Awesome, come on up. Congratulations, guys, you did a fantastic job, and ladies. All right, for our second place, and they win a $200 check. That will go to our Cub Scout Pack 3016. Y'all come on up here. There you go, congratulations.
Everybody look right at this, if you step up and you're next to them, you stay there and you come up.
There you go.
There you go. There you go. One more. Thank you.
And our first place, and they win a $300 check. That will go to Belmore Christian Academy. Do I have anybody there? Awesome, come on up. Congratulations, guys, you did a fantastic job, and ladies. All right, for our second place, and they win a $200 check. That will go to our Cub Scout Pack 3016. Y'all come on up here. There you go, congratulations.
Everybody look right at this, if you step up and you're next to them, you stay there and you come up.
There you go.
There you go. There you go. One more. Thank you.
And our first place, and they win a $300 check. That will go to Belmore Christian Academy. Do I have anybody there? Awesome, come on up. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, so, thank you all so much for also representing our city and giving us the opportunity to have this parade every year. So, it's enjoyable, and next year's gonna be bigger and better, as always. Thank you.
Thank you, Amanda, we appreciate all of the work that you put into the Christmas parade every year, and we appreciate everyone who took time to participate this year. We are very grateful to have that kind of participation and grateful to see that kind of community pride. Very grateful. And with that, we will move to our consent agenda. I trust everyone has had an opportunity to review the minutes from the November 10th Agenda Work Session, as well as the regular council meeting of that same date, as well as the October 2016 financial statement. We'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion, proof.
I'll stand, I got some questions. Okay.
During the, you mean the budget amendment? Okay, catch it. Okay. We have a motion, add a second. Roll call, please. I'm sorry. Janet told me just a few minutes ago that her voice is beginning to fail hers, so Diane is going to do the roll call. Sorry, forgot, five minutes time.
Boss Man Grab.
Yes.
Councilmember Pable.
Yes.
Councilmember Manning.
Yes.
Councilmember Sewell.
Yes.
Mayor Lambert.
Yes. At this time, we will entertain communication from citizens. I don't know if we've had anyone sign in on the list in here.
Ms. Cox, sign.
Okay. And on our list here, we have John Temple, 3938 South Mission Oaks Drive, East Ridge, Tennessee.
Thank you, Mayor, and Commissioners. Of course, I'm an native of East Ridge and live at Mission Oaks, and we do a particular Christmas celebration each year. We have something called Candle Lighting, which I don't think any other community in this part of the state does it. I've been told that. But basically, we take candles, put them in a sack, white sack, and it gives off a gold kind of radiance, and we turn the lights off in the house, and so we just have the bags, the white bags with the orange candles. And it's really very beautiful, and I didn't have any idea what it would look like until the first time, but it's really beautiful. So, we work on it, and it's this Monday night, weather permitting. If it rains Monday night, we do Tuesday. Rains Tuesday, we do it Wednesday, so forth. We try about three days, and eventually, if it keeps raining, we just throw our hands up. But for this, we've used your new electronic sign. You've been kind enough to put a tin Mission Oaks candle lighting Monday. So, that's the 12th, I believe, Monday the 12th. Now, along with that, Mike Williams has a fund called the Forgotten Child Fund, and he has a lot of fundraisers, Chief Mike Williams, and he has a lot of fundraisers to raise money for his kids. So, when they approached us and we agreed to help them, and they usually have a fire engine there, but at least five or six firefighters, and every car that comes by, they get a donation or try to, and they're pretty successful at it. So, they, so the more cars, the more visitors, the more money they make, the fund, and the more people see what we're doing with our neighborhood. So, I would just like to ask if the city can grant us a ad on the electronic thing out front that will help us and Chief Mike Williams. So, we've had it each year, but I understand it's, you should get it renewed each year, so.
It's definitely a tradition. My family and I have gone through Mission Oaks to see that for a while. I don't know how many, how many years, a long, long time. So, we really enjoy it, and it is very nice to see. I don't, I don't have a problem at all.
Matter of fact, I love making motions or proving it.
We have a motion, we have a second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to allow just the event, date, and time to be placed on the electronic or digital sign up right here.
And if they can put it out there Friday, that's great because what you put out there Friday afternoon stays all weekend usually, and so that would give you three days of exposure. And we just put it up, but if they can't, try Friday or Saturday or Monday morning, we'll take anything we can get, but the more the better, so. Thank you very much.
Thank you. If we could have the roll call, please, Diane.
Yes, sir. City Manager, I just discussed this about Florida. This is going up with preference, hanging billboards out on the highway and then using our sign, I was saying, at the same time. I have no, nothing against this idea, it's just something to throw out there, of course, I think that. This organization seems, gun shovels, but they're never tied off our side since it's a city function thing. And you find it's a city function, the child, and it's going to be involved in that, it goes back to the same thing, but I have nothing against it, I just want to throw that out.
Right. Well, I'm not sure that we have a formal policy on this, so my opinion would be, we grant it, come back and write a policy.
Let me take it step by step from each organization.
I'd like to say something along those same lines. I've had a couple of complaints from the American Legion down here in East Ridge that from their adjutant that they have been denied those kind of banners across Ringo Road. And I've forwarded that to the City Manager. I don't understand why they would be denied.
We never have.
Well, it never came before the council, it never made it that far. Somebody else down, down the line denied it before it ever reached us, so I would like for the City Manager to look into that.
Mayor, may I make a statement about that?
Yes.
I know that whenever the office goes on to have a truck tree, I call the sign shop in there that makes those signs and those things, and they're the ones responsible for hanging them. And I asked them if they could make me a sign and hang it for me. They said that they do not make the signs anymore, they have to get their signs, so they turned me down about hanging and making them up, and so they don't have no plans for them to make it up. And I just wondered if that's what they know, the Legion, and they took it as a no, that they wouldn't do it.
That's false.
Mayor, can I give you some history on the sign policy?
Yes, ma'am.
They might have told me a while back that the reason I couldn't use Coca-Cola was because of an appetite for Coca-Cola. I like to smell people from Long Island, but y'all use Coca-Cola signs.
Pepsi gave us banners, we'd use theirs, too.
And I think that's part of the reason, too, was that Coca-Cola wasn't giving them to us. But one of the things with using the Coca-Cola signs, it was hard for us to read to, when we were making the signs, which I think is what you're referring to, it was hard to read some of the lettering, we didn't have the markers and things that you use to make those signs anymore. So, what the policy was back with City Services is that if the organization wanted to provide the sign, if they go to a sign shop like Bestway Creating or the one that's here right on Ringo Road, Sign and Wrong, any of those, as long as they make them themselves, then we had no problem hanging them as long as the council approved it. And as far as American Legion, you know, that all signs go before council, like an organization just like the Mission Oaks making their request, and the barbecue from the church, those all went to the council. That never was approved or disapproved by any of the department heads, so I'm not really sure where that might have came up from, but as far as...
I'll give the adjutant your name and phone number.
That is good, but as far as what you're saying with the signage, that's why we just don't have the materials to do it anymore, but they're happy to hang them as long as they're provided the sign. So, that's some of the history.
But I think that they told them the same thing that they told me, and I figured it was a no that they wouldn't hang it because they couldn't make it, so I left it to them.
And that could be, they may have remembered us making signs many years ago, but they changed that policy probably mid-2000s, it was after I came when they changed that. Sorry, I just remembered that was some of the history that we lived with the signage.
That's fine. And again, I would say, you know, if we want to create a usage policy that governs what kind of messages we put on the digital sign here, so let's have at it. But in the meantime, I'd be inclined to grant the Mission Oaks message. I know we've done that, you know, the football coach at the high school has called us before and said, hey, you know, we've got a playoff game this Friday, can you put it on the sign out front? No problem. We do that just as a courtesy to the school, to, you know, relative to the community. But, you know, again, if we need a formal policy to dictate who we allow to place messages on that sign, then say, you know, let's do it, but let's not, let's not hurt this effort in the meantime.
Frankly, there needs to be a policy on use of any state facilities such as Camp Ridge.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. If we could have the roll call please, Dan.
Yes, sir. City manager and I just discussed this about Florida. This was going up with preference, hanging billboards out on the highway, then using our sign, I was saying, I have no, nothing against this idea, it's just something to throw out there, of course, I like that. This organization seems that gun showers up there never ties off our side, since it's a city function thing. You find it's a city function, the child fund is going to be involved in that, it goes back to the same thing, but I have nothing against it, I just want to throw that out.
Right. Well, I'm not sure that we have a formal policy on this. So my opinion would be, we grant it, come back and write a policy.
Let me.
We're taking it step by step from each organization.
I'd like to say something along those same lines. I've had, I've had a couple of complaints from the American Legion down here in East Ridge that, from their adjutant, that they have been denied those kind of banners across Ringo Road. And I've forwarded that to, to the city manager. I don't understand why they would be denied.
We never have.
Well, it never came before the council, it never made it that far. Somebody else down, down the line denied it before it ever reached us. So I would like for the city manager to look into that.
May I make a statement about that?
Yes.
I know that whenever the office goes on to have a truck tree, I call the sign shop that makes those signs and those things, and they're the ones responsible for hanging them. And I asked them if they could make me a sign and hang it for me. They said that they do not make the signs anymore, they have to get their signs, so that they turned me down about hanging and making them. So I didn't run it to the city council, but they told me, this is what they told me, that they do not make them, Coca-Cola does not earn the signs anymore for them to make them up, and so they don't have no grants for them to make it up. And I just wondered if that's what they know, the Legion, and they took it as a no, that they wouldn't do it.
That's possible.
Mayor, can I give you some history on the sign policy?
Yes, ma'am.
They might have told me a while back that the reason I couldn't use Coca-Cola was because of an appetite for Coca-Cola. I'd like to smell people from Lincoln, but y'all don't use Coca-Cola signs.
Well, Pepsi gave us banners, we'd use theirs too.
Yeah.
And I think that's part of the reason too, was that Coca-Cola wasn't giving them to us. But one of the things with using the Coca-Cola signs, it was hard for us to read to, when we were making the signs, which I think is what you're referring to, it was hard to read some of the lettering, we didn't have the markers and things that you use to make those signs anymore. So what the policy was back with city services, is that if the organization wanted to provide the sign, if they go to a sign shop like Bestway Creating, or the one that's here right on Ringo Road, Sign and Wrong, any of those, as long as they make them themselves, then we had no problem hanging them as long as the council approved it. And as far as American Legion, you know, that all, all signs go before council, like an organization just like the Mission Oaks making their request, and the barbecue from the church, those all went to the council, that never was approved or disapproved by any of the department heads. So I'm not really sure where that might have came up from, but as far as.
I'll give the adjutant your name and phone number.
That is good, but as far as what you're saying with the signage, that's why we just don't have the materials to do it anymore, but they're happy to hang them as long as they're provided the sign. So that's some of the history.
That they told them the same thing that they told me, and I figured as a no, that they wouldn't hang it because they couldn't make it, so I left it to them.
And that could be, they may have remembered us making signs many years ago, but they changed that policy probably mid-2000s, it was after I came that they changed that. Sorry, I just remember that was some of the history that we live with the signage.
That's fine. Again, I would say, you know, if we want to create a usage policy that governs what kind of messages we put on the digital sign here, let's have at it. But in the meantime, I'd be inclined to grant the Mission Oaks message. I know we've done that, you know, the football coach at the high school has called us before and said, hey, you know, we've got a playoff game this Friday, can you put it on the sign out front? No problem. We do that, just as a, as a courtesy to the school, to, and relative to the community. But, you know, again, if we need a formal policy to dictate who we allow to place messages on that sign, then say, you know, let's, let's do it, but let's not, let's not hurt this, this effort in the meantime.
Frankly, there needs to be a policy on use of any city facilities such as Camp Jordan, I don't want the banners or the signs, I don't want that. I know there has been issues in the past, that groups wanting to use Camp George, Rick Brede, things like that, council may not consider it the same time.
As a matter of. Sorry, your interruption, city attorney. But that, what you just said reminded me of something, if I don't get it out there right now, I will forget. Is Senator Gordon and I still here?
Yes.
He and I are going to have a, a local town hall here in East Ridge, and that's going to be on, I'm looking at my calendar, on January the 19th, over at the community center for all that are interested in coming.
What time?
Seven o'clock. And that's a, that's a off Thursday for the council. We, we wanted to put it on an off day, off meeting day, so that you guys could attend if you, if you so desire.
All right. Thank you, sir. On the, yes, on the Mission Oaks, yes, yes. So we do have a motion and a second to grant the approval for the Mission Oaks message to go on the digital sign. We have a roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Brannan?
Yes.
Councilman Cable?
Yes.
Councilman Manning?
Yes.
Councilman Sewell?
Yes.
Mayor Lambert?
Yes. The next person who signed in was Carolyn Cox, who is a property owner at 1301 John Ross Road here in East Ridge. And I believe she distributed letters to everyone.
Most everyone. I have a problem, I wish I didn't, but there is a drainage ditch at the back of the houses along John Ross Road down the easement, belongs to the city of East Ridge, I think. And it's an ongoing problem. Now, I'm at the corner of John Ross Road and Coleman Circle, and across the back of my property, we have a concrete drainage pipe, the big one, put in, oh, about 40 years ago, I guess. My husband and I lived in this house during the 70s, and then we kept the house and it's rental property now. But the problem is that people that live south of us, apparently, it appears, they throw all kinds of stuff in that ditch, and over time, it gets all clogged up, and then when a heavy rain comes, when it washes it all down, and where my concrete pipe begins, it gets blocked up, and then the water comes out of the ditch and carries all this trash, it's all kinds of stuff. Limbs, of course, are what's blocking things up, but then they throw in, somebody is, beer bottles and aluminum cans, and we even had two pumpkins come up this last hard rain. So when it pulls all that stuff out of the ditch, and then it spreads out over my yard, it deposits it there. So this, of course, is a problem, and it lessens the value of my property, and it's stressful to me. And I've contacted Mr. Branum, Norman Branum, in the street department, but I haven't, this hadn't been resolved yet. And so it's my understanding that the open ditches and drainage ditches on easements are supposed to be kept open and free flowing by the street department maintenance, is that correct?
I do not know if that's correct.
We have designated recorded easements in our drainage easements in our city records, yes.
Well, but, I mean, I'm asking, isn't it supposed to be kept open? If a problem occurs where it's all blocked up and the water's not staying in the ditch, doesn't the maintenance?
If it's a designated, on our records, if it's a designated drainage easement with the city of East Ridge being designated, and you would be responsible to keep that unclogged?
Well, I'm asking for some help, because right now.
I have to check on our records, just to ascertain whether or not that, that is a city easement. If it's not a city easement, if you don't have recorded easement on, in our records, then we can't go on private property to, to take care of that.
Well, I know last year it was cleaned out. I brought it to the attention of Mr. Branum, and he did, it cleaned out then, so I will report.
Will you take a look at it?
We will definitely investigate and see what can be done.
I'll likely contact you.
Yes, ma'am, we do have your, your contact information here. I see an address, but I'm not sure, I see a telephone number, oh, yeah, there is one, okay, on the, on the December 1st letter, yes.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you. Okay, those are the only two who signed in. Do we have anyone else here tonight who's a resident of the city of East Ridge or a business owner who has a comment, question, or concern you'd like to share with the council? Can I see none? We will move on to communication with council members. Mr. Cable, do you have anything for us?
Other than I'd like to thank the manager and her staff for the fine job they've done at the Christmas parade, even though I didn't buy it by the road, throwing candy.
I didn't hear that, by the way. I didn't hear that.
But, and if we decide not to meet on December the 22nd, I'd like to wish everybody a Merry Christmas. So, and then Mr. Manning, Mr. Brannan, I've enjoyed serving with y'all, so it's supposed to be y'all's last night sitting up here. And, and.
Yes, sir.
Don't cry.
All right, Mr. Brannan?
Yeah, you know, talking about cleaning the ditches, the city of, the city of East Ridge is, and I'm not trying to defend or anything, I'm just making a point, making a statement, the city of East Ridge has got how many miles of ditches?
Miles.
And, and the road that I live on, needless to say, being behind RVs and murder team, I get a lot of trash thrown out at my place too, and unfortunately, I have to go out there and pick it up. But what I'm getting at is, one of the things, we instituted a program for public service back.
People who have to do community service?
Community service. Could we put those people on to help Mr. Branum out with cleaning these ditches out?
Problem you have on that is under workers' compensation laws, if they get injured, we are responsible for the treatment and the medical costs.
With the rape, I mean, they're, what are they doing at Camp Jordan? Because that's the only place I've ever heard of them to work.
Picking up, picking up trash and doing some of that minor stuff is fine, but when you start getting them in the ditches and using equipment and tools and things like that.
I'm not talking about giving them a facko, I'm just talking about giving them a credit.
No, no, no.
I'm just saying.
I'm just telling you what the workers' compensation laws, that we are, that we're responsible, we're the quickest ladies to work under our, or if you make, if you put them into an environment like drainage ditches with water and bubbles and everything else.
We got people walking down MI 75, MI 24. I mean, I don't, I don't see how that's any more dangerous myself, but the only thing I'm saying is, is could we, I think, and this is my last meeting, so, you know, I'll, I'll let Ms. Elton and Mr. Williams deal with it, but, but I'm just saying, I think we should take a look at that. But I'll say, but then, the street department will probably use some, a little extra help.
But I think first, we've got to find out if we can get it to drive from the easement or.
We do have, we do have some easements in the city, and we have those recorded.
Is this the ditch that runs along John Ross Road?
People checked in on that here about 10 years ago when we had that problem, dead road, where they wouldn't have put real wraps after beginning of.
We took pictures of it with Mr. Brannan.
When you go off the road, you can go back within the right way, and sometimes go further in the right way, because what you're doing is you're trying to channel that onto the roadway. So you can go back 25, 30 feet on both sides, but just to take, when you ditch on, on part of the property where we don't have an easement, that's where we get control.
That is convenient, but we found out that we didn't have an easement. So they just put real wraps, just, just like you said, backfired up off the easement, and that's where the side.
Well, off the right, off the right.
The thing is, it's created a problem. Ice layer and those things washing out these pink and black yards that are falling into the ditch.
That's, that's the problem, we're trying to do that, you're right.
Mr. Brannan, do you have anything else?
That's all I have. Thank you folks for entrusting me for four years to, to sit up here and do what I feel is right then. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Brannan, do you have anything for us?
I would like to say, before the council member and attorney, I torture all the time, and the city manager, I don't want to leave him out because he'll cut the payday. But anyhow, I'll thank God for being able to sit up here. I thank God for your support, because I love you, and if you didn't vote for me, I still love you. And if the Lord tears you two years, I will be back, will not be torn, until we, city chaplain out here, if another folk may not be sitting up here, but as I was advocating to the city manager the other day, I hope he don't mind me saying this, which I'll say, and he can tell me about it later, but, but I will be back up here, and I will be a pain in your side if somebody ain't calling my name, so. But, but, you know, anything I don't believe in, I will stand up and give my five misses to taxpayers. And if I can borrow money off the mayor, I'll do that too. But I will say, I thank God for all of you, and all the people I work with, and all the ladies, and all you folks, and all the men and ladies in this. Somebody asked me this question, and I'll shut it, because I can't mind not preaching, I won't take it for offense. But, but going there has been an honor, me and you running into each other all the time, and that's a fine man and a fine wife. And somebody asked me a question, and I'm like, if I can't, you don't know if I'm ready to ask me something. I bet you'll be glad to be out of that mess I've heard. It's only a mess if you come in office and look at it that way. I'm a servant citizen, serve council person for the taxpayers. It ain't a mess, it ain't been a mess to me. I'll be honest with you, I'm torped inside, doing this my last night, but I love everybody in here, and the ones that are here, I love them too. I thank God for all of y'all, and y'all be praying for me, I'll be praying for y'all. That's all I have to say, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Before I take it for offense. You're always following, that's. Well, first of all, since we probably won't be here for the next meeting, like wish everybody a Merry Christmas after this year. And like to, we won't be red and bark, we'll be best to him up at the State House about helping East Ridge. And that you're here too, we'll best you too. But, that's serving you, Mark, and, well, that's, we'll still be in the fall day. I loved it a long time, so.
Ninety-nine years.
I will, I will probably, I'll probably still sing, but, thank you. Appreciate working with all the love you do. That's all I got.
All right, thanks, sir. Just want to echo, it's already been said, as tradition holds here at East Ridge, we typically cancel what would be the normal fourth Thursday night meeting in December, because it's so close to Christmas, and that actually falls on Christmas, so we probably will not be here again until, until January, so Merry Christmas to everyone. Well, outside, excuse me, outside of, of course, I swear again, I'm over the dying, so we have another chance to wish you Merry Christmas. But I do want to thank Vice Mayor Brannan and councilmember Manning for their service. It's not easy. It's, it's not, it's, it's rewarding, rewarding work, but it's not easy, it's a large time commitment. You take on a lot of, lot of things when you decide to do this, and we appreciate all that you have put into it and all that has been invested. So, thank you very much, and I'm excited that we'll be working with Mr. Williams and Ms. Elton. You two will be there.
And I wish both of them luck. I had fun, the last, you say this, I shut it. You said that more than what I said, again. But I had fun during the lunch, I got to go around and talk to everybody who was running for office. And I appreciate everybody's time, that they got to work, got to do their job, got to get in. I thank God for the ones they sent to us, I appreciate both of y'all.
All right, thanks, sir. Mr. City Manager, I know you're not feeling very well, so we appreciate your.
Just barreling.
Yeah, we appreciate your efforts just to be here.
I just want to thank Mark Brannan and Danny Manning for the opportunity to work with you. I know it wasn't a long time, six months, but certainly I will be tapping you every now and then on certain issues and certain items to kind of get your feelings, as I have been for the past six months. It's been a real honor, and I appreciate y'all too. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's a bear.
Thank you, sir. All right, we will move to old business and item eight, ordinance number 1023.
An ordinance of the city council of the city of East Ridge, Jensen, minimum ordinance number 746, which established an occupational safety and health program, adding section five, administration subsection A9, your own second file.
Thank you, officer. We have a motion and a second to approve. We'll have the next question. Roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Brannan?
Yes.
Councilman Cable?
Yes.
Councilman Manning?
Yes.
Councilman Sewell?
Yes.
Mayor Lambert?
Yes. It's the only item of old business that we have, so we will move to new business. And a public hearing on ordinance number 1024, that is in regard to rezoning of 4333 Lazard Street from R1 Residential District to R2 Residential Duplex District. And having been properly, sorry, having been properly advertised, I would like to open this public hearing. Is there anyone here who would like to speak in regard to this, whether it be in favor of or in opposition to the rezoning of this particular property? Can I see none? We did hear this already, the planning commission, the past planning commission was approved, sent here with a couple of stipulations, and I think the city attorney probably could speak too.
Mayor, the property ceases to be occupied by the owner in the future, the owner shall immediately come before the planning commission, which will then review the current zoning of the subject property.
Yes, sir.
And that was something we had added. It was less restrictive and more of a past constitutional muster, as opposed to what apparently the planning commission had recommended. And we would submit that that would be advisable to include that provision, obviously going to take monitoring by, by the city as to when, in fact, the property ceases to be occupied by the owner. We got into, council may remember, fairly recently, an issue of a transmission shop up there. So we're just going to stay on top of it. We'll have to check and see if the owner still is occupying that property.
And essentially, just to let everyone know what the nature of this case is, the owner of the property, it is a, it is essentially a house that will be used as a duplex, is currently being renovated. The owner will occupy one half, members of. The owner will occupy one half, members of his family will occupy the other side. And several neighbors came to the planning commission meeting, expressed approval of this. Apparently the property looks better right now than it has in years. Uh, they've done a lot of work, a lot of cleanup. And so the neighbors around this property are very pleased with the owner and have no problem with the rezoning of the property. The planning commission, uh, feels like, generally speaking, we would rather not do any more rezoning of properties to become R-two, potentially duplexes. But because the neighbors had no problem, because it's owner occupied, it was approved by the planning commission and brought here, and the stipulation added that when the owner ceases to occupy the property, it has to come back to the planning commission.
And it's because I understand, Mr. Rabbit, I understand what the planning commission's recommendation was, that the property could not be anything other than owner occupied, and that had some constitutional issues. Now, if the property becomes other than owner occupied in the future, it comes back before the planning commission for consideration.
So essentially, what we didn't want to happen was, you know, a year from now, the owner moves out and is running it as a, just a standard duplex. And so in the event the owner moves out, it will come back to the planning commission and we will revisit the subject.
And as I came again to Mr. Custer, we need to monitor that situation because I can assure you that the owner's not going to call us and say, oh, by the way, I moved it out, so I guess I need to come before the planning commission.
The idea I had in this is, uh, one is going to live in one side and one is going to live in the other side. Neither side is up for rent.
Correct, yeah, neither side will be rented, right.
Okay, neither side will be rented. Then either one of them moves out and they have to notify us before they can rent it. But we still got one of the owners living in one side.
But still, if it's occupied, ceases to be occupied by the owner in the future, so that will include one half of it.
So if any, any part of the ownership moves out, it has to come back to the planning commission.
Sir, I've talked to several neighborhood owners in my neighborhood, and it's going to be a fourplex, they're flat, gisted, and since they have to come back to change it to a duplex, they have no problem with it not being a rent.
Right. Right, and so with that, we will close the public hearing. And we will consider ordinance number one zero two four on first reading.
Next motion for.
Oh, just, oh, just one more.
I take the motion and.
Thanks, sir.
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of East Ridge, Tennessee, to amend the zoning regulations and the zoning map of the City of East Ridge, Tennessee, to rezon the property located at forty-three thirty-three Lazar Street from R-one residential district to R-two residential duplex district. At tax map number one six nine I J zero two three, your own first reading.
Yes, sir.
Now I make a motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion and a second.
Clearly.
Right, inclusive of that, uh, that clause where if it ceases to be owner occupied, then it comes back to the planning commission.
I'll say.
We have a motion and a second. Any other comments or questions?
Let me do this, Mayor, but, um, obviously when it comes on for a second reading, I would suggest we make the change to mention something that, or to cover something that Councilman Cagle said, I would suggest that we include the language, if the subject property ceases to be occupied in its entirety by the owner of the future. I think that answers your question.
That answers my question.
I think it perhaps did before, but there's no doubt if we add in its entirety, uh, the owner of the future. And I'll take your both sides of duplex.
Okay, and we can adopt that change with the second reading.
On second reading, yes.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second to approve. We have the roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Rabbit?
Yes.
Councilman Cagle?
Yes.
Councilman Manning?
Yes.
Councilman Sue?
Yes.
Mayor Lambert?
Yes.
I got to make a change on.
Okay, we move to item C, resolution two six one four.
Resolution of the City of East Ridge, Tennessee, authorizing the issuance of interest-bearing equipment acquisition capital capital aid bonds, series two thousand sixteen, at an amount not exceeding one hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars, and providing for the payment of state debt.
Yes, in the two thousand sixteen seventeen budget, we had the replacement of nineteen ninety-eight ninety-nine backhoe and a replacement of one team on a track loader or skid steer classified as. Uh, we budgeted a hundred and forty-five thousand dollars in the budget. Uh, Norman Brown, street department supervisor, so checking on prices out there, uh, we received, we have it on the second page, the agenda, Steelers machinery and JCB Chattanooga. We are going to get the prices down to one hundred and thirty-three thousand four hundred dollars for both of these pieces of heavy equipment, uh, on state contract through JCB and Chattanooga. Uh, we come out to one hundred and thirty-three thousand four hundred dollars for those two pieces of equipment, plus five hundred dollars, which would be issuance costs attached to that. So I'm looking at price not to exceed one hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars. This would be for a period of ten years, as was proposed in the, uh, budget. However, I will bring out at this time that you look at the last page, which is bond and debt service, the interest that we pay, uh, one hundred and thirty-four thousand dollar loan for a period of ten years, it's going to come up to about twenty-two, twenty-one thousand two hundred and sixty-five dollars. It may be possible, since we have the dollars in our fund balance, paying for it in fund balance, to save the twenty-one thousand two hundred dollars, uh, we'll extend that as interest over the next ten years. So we kind of have an option.
I agree. My personal preference would be to, to take this out of the fund balance. Let's just be.
Be a fund balance a little over, over five million dollars.
What I agree with, I don't believe, I would go ahead.
I know. Yeah, when I looked at this again, I said, wow, I didn't think it was that high. And I got hold of this paper, looked at it, I said, that's, that's a lot of money for one hundred and thirty-four. So I think it would be best to, uh, we're having to just to save that money to buy it out of the fund balance.
Make a motion to amend, uh, resolution number twenty-six fourteen, to reflect the payment, rather than, uh, being bonded, payment for these two pieces of equipment that we paid out of the general fund.
I would prefer that say general fund, fund balance.
Fund balance, general fund, fund balance, okay.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second.
I'll second it.
Any other comments or questions?
Question to amend.
It was to amend, yeah, amend resolution twenty-six fourteen to reflect that the, the equipment would be purchased with funds from the general fund, fund balance, rather than it bonded out. If we can have the roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Rabbit?
Yes.
Councilman Cagle?
Yes.
Councilman Manning?
Yes.
Councilman Sue?
Yes.
Mayor Lambert?
Yes.
Item D, ordinance number one zero two five.
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of East Ridge, Tennessee, to amend ordinance number ten thirteen entitled, and orders to provide revenue for the City of East Ridge, Tennessee, for fiscal year July first, two thousand sixteen, to June thirtieth, two thousand seventeen, appropriating the same to the payment of expenses of the municipal government by changing the revenues of the general fund, grant fund, and drug fund, and by changing expenditures of the general fund, grant fund, federal forfeiture fund, and drug fund, your own first reading.
Quick motion to read.
Thank you.
We have a motion and a second to approve, I think.
We will, we will change it between first and second reading to reflect that you want the purchase to come from the fund balance instead of from a loan. So we'll do that between two.
Okay. Okay, and I know, Mr. Cagle, you had some questions you mentioned earlier.
Yeah, the financial statement.
Okay.
Let's go ahead and follow up the general fund, and then I can ask this because it's a different effect.
Oh, okay, okay.
The financial statement.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second to approve, ordinance ten twenty-five. If we can have the roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Rabbit?
Yes.
Councilman Cagle?
Yes.
Councilman Manning?
Yes.
Councilman Sue?
Yes.
Mayor Lambert?
Yes.
Okay, and your question?
All right, uh, this financial statement's up to October. I have noticed that in the state annual tax, we have a, not as yet received any money. Do we receive that all or one month sum at the end of the year?
Yes, sir, it will come usually around May.
Around May, okay. And the same thing on the EVA grocery receipt tax?
Actually, that one comes quarterly. I've just received that one in the mail for the first week. It comes quarter.
Yeah, because I was just very capable, you're.
Right, it comes quarterly too. And you have to remember that it's always lag, it looks like it's lagging a little behind because July revenue that comes in does not belong to, to this year, it belonged most of to last year. So next year in July, we'll be getting the final numbers for June.
Okay, and in, uh, the Gator Club League?
Uh-huh.
Since July, we have, we say Gator Club.
Right, that is for tournaments that we hold at Camp Jordan, the special tournaments that the city does, the softball and baseball.
But we haven't had any tournaments down there?
No, sir.
No soccer, no?
No, not that we hosted, no.
Okay. The track round, just to me like it's down from this time last year?
I think that would be a stump question, I'm not sure.
Sir? I've noticed on the revenue funds here that the track round is down from this time last year, a tremendous, or for any reason why?
Well, obviously, we haven't had as many cross-country runs or something like that, that's why it would be down.
All right, the same thing on the field round? Same thing on the field round? I notice it's down to about, uh, two-thirds.
Two-thirds from last year?
Well, it's, uh, nine thousand, sixteen thousand. Sixteen thousand this time last year, it's nine thousand this time this year.
I'll have to get, I'll have to look at that and get back with you on management for that. I wasn't aware of that.
Okay, uh, same thing with the amphitheater, it's down tremendously.
We have anything out there?
And, uh, explain to me what tournament team fees are.
How can that be? Or what, what, what is?
Okay, that is, when we're hosting a tournament, that is the fees that each team pays to play in the tournament.
Okay, so we haven't had a tournament since July?
Right, right, we have them in the spring. We have girls softball.
We haven't had a soccer tournament?
Mr. Cagle, let's, let's make sure we understand the difference. We, the City of East Ridge, host recreation tournaments. When we host recreation tournaments, at that point in time, the folks from the office go down and they collect the money and it's our tournament, and that's what that money's for. When we have another tournament, like the soccer tournaments that we have down there, we don't host a soccer tournament. Those soccer tournaments are hosted by whoever is paying for the field rental to us, and we're leasing the fields to them.
Well, did we not host a recreation soccer tournament here lately? Or was that just a league soccer tournament down there that weekend?
We just had a league down there, we weren't charging any money.
Okay. Now, my next question to you is about the advertisements, parks, and recreation. Do you ever receive anything of those signs hanging down there?
That comes up in January.
It's due, it's due in January for the next year. We received, yeah, you talking about Dick's Sporting Goods?
No, I'm just, I'm just reading out here, I haven't had a department.
Yeah, that's Dick's Sporting Goods.
Five thousand dollars. We haven't received any.
There's more money coming this year, yeah.
Right. Uh, vending into possessions, who, who handles that? That's these vending machines we got setting around over here at the five and?
Yes, sir, those are different, uh, the vending machines are for the coke machines that we do.
That's here.
That's here. The one, uh, they have one out at Camp Jordan, and then they have one at the community center.
And we count that money and put it in here, but we never get credit for that money because it goes into general fund.
It'd be a lot easier for Parks and Rec had its own fund, just ahead.
Sled soccer?
You've done a great job.
Sled soccer, is, is that ours, or is that the contract?
Sled soccer is contract, yes, sir.
Okay, so it, uh, it's not easy, but it's close. Uh, the community center M fee, is that the membership fee where we charge the citizens to become a member of the community center?
It says M fee?
Yes, sir.
Is that what you got to?
Yes, sir, it's a membership.
Yeah, that is membership fee.
Okay, so it's, it's down, so we lost membership this time last year.
Again, I, I haven't, I haven't looked at those.
I'd like to see this good, community center, membership fee, the simple fact that the taxpayers are already paying for it. And if we need some kind of form, fill it out, let's, let's fill it out so we know who to contact if we have trouble making this.
I don't see a problem with that. But now, do you want, do you want that membership fee to be free for people living in the City of East Ridge, or do you want it to be free for everybody?
Well, you're charging everybody, so it has to be for everybody, because we cannot, because we.
I would be fine with that, I don't mind dropping that.
We can't charge outside.
Well, did we receive, uh, some kind of money to build the center with, federal money or something?
Well, I don't know about that, I wouldn't hear.
The community center, I don't think so.
If we didn't spend any federal dollars on it, then we have a way to charge those that live outside the city membership fee.
When I worked at the community center in two thousand and one, we charged a membership fee for, uh, I think it was ten dollars for anyone. And I think it might have been five dollars maybe for, um, non-East Ridge residents. And all they had to show was a driver's license, they filled out a little card, we kept one half of the card and they kept the other. I mean, that was as complicated as it got, but that was two thousand and one.
Were we charging ten dollars for the outside residents, five dollars?
Opposite of that.
Okay.
I don't think it was more than ten dollars. And then we had a yearly fee for the, um, aerobics people.
Okay, well, I'm just asking questions, if this has to be discussed later?
Absolutely.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, absolutely.
Uh, general, do you want to answer that, Mr. City Manager?
Probably we do.
Okay, I noticed expenditures of thirty, we're supposed to be at thirty-three percent where it is seventy percent.
Right.
And is that due to?
Insurance.
One month sum?
Yes, because we pay workers' comp, all of our insurance has come out, and they come out in August and September.
Okay.
So we're paying three hundred thousand dollars basically out of it.
Okay, so that, that is from that, uh, special projects. What are, what are special projects?
Okay, uh, that actually only has three items in it this year in the budget. You have, uh, we pay the utilities for the track up at the high school, uh, we have two thousand dollars set aside, uh, for education and some for different things, and then we had twenty-five thousand dollars budgeted for the birthday party. And so really, the only thing that's come out so far is the birthday party, which we're done with, and then we're paying utilities. So that's why we're at that point.
Okay, that was a month's. Some utilities got, uh, eight or nine months to go.
And they run about eighteen to twenty dollars in total. It's various, we're just doing the track lots, it's not that.
I'm just looking at this, six hundred and seventy-three dollars is the first one in line.
Yeah, but most of that, like I said, over three hundred thousand is the utility, I mean, is the insurance for workers' comp, liability, crime, all those that we pay through the pool.
Uh, since, uh, home recreation, let me just stay with it. Uh, notice on the expenditures, a multi-purpose building is up to thirty-eight percent, uh, thirty-three percent. The soccer recreation is fifty-two percent versus thirty-three percent, so, and then we've got, uh, football and cheerleader, I can say the name's football cheerleaders.
Yes, so they're done.
We, we, we can answer, we can answer all these real quickly.
So the cheerleaders are done?
They're done, but the reason, the reason that we're.
Is there?
Uh, I believe I had one more invoice came through and they'll get it.
Okay, yeah, now my question is the garage and transfer station, uh, it's at eighty-seventh percent.
Okay, I can explain that. Okay, I can explain that. That has to do with fuel, because the fuel comes into the gra, it depends on when we're paying the fuel bills.
So this is the diesel deal?
This is the diesel, but then we're also expensing out, then we'll turn and we'll expense out the fuel throughout the, you know, at the end of the month. So at the end of the year, the fuel will zero out, there will not be, but that's what's going on. But that's what it is.
The diesel only accounts for the charge of the gas.
Only diesel.
Okay. Thank you for all my questions.
Can I address that?
Yes, sir.
Please. Two or three things, Councilman Cagle, that I've noticed, this is the first time I've seen these expenditures. So, and just we showed these back here in the back, I mean revenues, I've seen my expenditures, but not my revenues. Two or three of these are just wrong. I mean, I selected one one of them from Memorial Hospital that shows on here for the amphitheater, so that's wrong. And there's other stuff on here that's just plain wrong. So what we've got to do is like we did on our revenue, on our expenditures of the day, Diane and I have already sat down, and we've gone over a lot of the stuff, there's a lot of reasons. One reason is that the community center is, which is a multi-purpose building, is because when Mr. Hyatt was here, he decided to do away with building maintenance, which I wish he hadn't done. But he put all building maintenance into one group, which meant that Byron Ray handled that. Byron didn't understand that that's the way it was, so Byron kept charging it back to us, and still does that from time to time. We had a fifteen hundred dollar custodial bill that was on there for the community center, and we don't have custodial services at the community center. So right now, Diane is working with us on a daily basis to try to get all this stuff straightened out, and we tried to get as much of it done before tonight, because I knew he was going to ask about it, and I was trying to, and I'm fine about it, I mean, that's, I, I, I don't mind having to watch dog to do that, and I just wanted to make sure we had it in time. Some of these numbers I hadn't seen until tonight, I would try to correct those as well. But I'll be working on being more than happy to answer it next, next meeting.
Thank you all. Item E is our consent agenda for grants, that is inclusive of Resolution twenty-six sixteen, twenty-six seventeen, twenty-six eighteen.
Make a motion to approve.
No, these, these are just the grants that we're applying for.
Consent agenda.
So we have a motion and a second?
Yes, sir.
Okay, we have any other comments, questions?
On the copy I got here, this one, State Access Agreement, the date's going to have to be changed back here, back in November.
Yeah, it's going to have to change. Do you have any of that?
Okay, correction is noted. We have anything else? Roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Braddock?
Yes.
Councilman Cagle?
Yes.
Councilman Manning?
Yes.
Councilman Sewell?
Yes.
Mayor Lambert?
Yes.
All right. Item F is to discuss and or take action on a conceptual plan to further develop recreational fields and facilities at Camp Jordan Park. Basically, the thirty thousand view of this is, I provided a, a resolution that we can choose to adopt if we want to. Again, the, the crux of the matter is this, that we have an opportunity, we've had discussions with, with Mayor Copinger, with Commissioner Boyd, with others, Bob Dove, Tim Morgan from the CBB. We've had discussions with all of these people about the possibility of joining together to make significant improvements at Camp Jordan Park. And when I say significant improvements, I mean the addition of some turf soccer fields, the improvement of what is already there, but the addition of new facilities, that would frankly make Camp Jordan Park a potential site for a sprinkling type of event. It would allow us the opportunity to bring in tournaments that right now we, we simply can't because of the number of fields that we have, because the soccer fields, the new soccer fields, it would be turf fields, it would allow use during times that we currently can't use the fields, or would have a hard time using the fields. So, the way that we could do this, there are probably a couple of different ways. The easiest, cleanest way would be to do a tax increment financing plan, which captures property tax off of the Jordan Crossing development, and allocates that toward debt service on money that we would put into the park. And just to give you an idea roughly of what we're talking about in terms of dollars, the resolution mentions, throws out a, a figure of not to exceed fifteen million dollars, may not take that much, may not be able to generate that much, it just depends. However, just to give you an example, when the Jordan Crossing development is, is built out, the conservative estimate is that it would be, you know, seventy-five to eighty million dollar appraised value. If that is the case, if you back out the education portion of property taxes, the county's portion and the city's portion would be about ninety-three thousand dollars a year, eight-hundred ninety-six thousand per year. If that money is reinvested back into the park, we could make Camp Jordan just an unbelievable asset. It's already a great place, but we could take it to an entirely new level. And, you know, this is an opportunity, again, it's potentially your marketing money that we're not, we're not receiving now. It will be new funds that are generated by things that aren't here yet, in terms of property taxes. And I can tell you, from, again, the conversations that, that I've had with Tim Morgan, with Bob Dove, they're very excited that this is a possibility. And what I would like to do, and whether it's through a resolution like the one I distributed, whether it is simply a motion to this effect, I would ask the council to allow the city manager and I to explore this possibility, to work with the county, with the CBB, and develop a plan, and bring it back to the council, at which point council can vote up or down. That's really, that's really what we want. We want the, we want the opportunity to, to pursue it and see what happens.
I make a motion to you and City Manager and Attorney, so, if we can, you know, who you need to get with, and go forward with it. Because I think Camp Jordan, if you go forward with it, anything in the city that approved our city would need to go forward to the backwards. That's why I made a difference for you, because I say the same things happen, you know, she, you know, say the same things happen. That's my motion.
So I was here a couple of weeks ago, we just discussed taking up the high school up here, add to those bill, putting in another hundred thousand dollars a year, and then our budget to maintain that. And our main objective to that was to put more recreation up here on this end of East Ridge. So now here we are, going to go borrow fifteen million dollars, put more recreation down on the lower end of East Ridge, just like the citizens were saying, everything we're spending is going on the lower end down there.
Well, you, you were against doing this up here this end?
Yes, sir, I still am.
So do you not want to see any recreation developed at all?
I see some built, right here behind us, we've got property right down here on Spring Bill, that was the building, we've got property up here off of Oakdale, this is the flood zone, it's like Camp Jordan Park views. And so I, I see we, we need to spend some money up here on recreation before we start spending fifteen million down here.
Well, I, I, I think, I think we need to spend some up here, but I also think Camp Jordan Park is not like anything else Hamilton County has.
You've got the best thing there.
It's, it's, it's the largest municipal park in the state of Tennessee.
And I notice you mentioned the spring fling, I know how the spring fling gets to go to Murfreesboro, are we going to be moving out there in Murfreesboro to run the spring around here?
That's, that's what Tim Morgan and Bob Dove do.
Then I'd like to make a motion to get Tim Boyd?
We already have a motion on the floor.
Well, and?
We also have said.
I'd like to hear Mr. Manning's opinion on this.
He thinks it's a fantastic idea. I talked to him two days ago, City Manager and I had a conference call with him. To quote him, he thinks it's a great idea, he was actually here with his daughter at Camp Jordan Park two weeks ago for a soccer tournament, and to quote him, he has recreation envy, because Knox County has nothing to offer like Camp Jordan Park, and he thinks that?
We could take all the property tax from Jordan Crossing down there and put toward this fifteen million dollars.
Potentially. And again, you know, I don't have the numbers, we don't have the assessed values, that, that would all need to be worked out. I think we have potentially at our disposal Mark Navatopu, is, is the most capable individual at putting together a plan for this kind of project. So I think, you know, I think it's an opportunity to build upon what we have, but I also think, when you're, when you're talking about the border region district, it's a fantastic opportunity to enhance that district, because if we have additional tournaments coming in, Wally's Restaurant is going to benefit, Cracker Barrel's going to benefit, the fast food places are going to benefit, hotels are going to benefit, Bass Pro Shop, it's going to be significant, the economic impact that would be, that would be created by this kind of arrangement.
Mr. Manning, I've got a question for you. You have the, you have the right to do that, but this is your last meeting, are you really going to call the question on a fifteen million dollar piece of legislation? Are you really going to do that?
Are you going to sit around and write that thing with it?
No.
Gentlemen, do you?
I'm not, I'm not, I've not said a word.
Hold on, everyone, everyone settle down.
I've not said a word about this.
Everyone, everyone settle down. Mr. Manning, if you're willing, if we could?
Yeah.
Have one question, yes, sir.
Um, I don't see anything in here, and perhaps I missed it, that says that it's going to have to come back before the council for, to be voted on in the future. Unless I'm missing it, I, I don't see that.
Well, and that's, and that's why I say, you know, if, if this, this resolution was, you know, an example of what we could do, but again, I said, and I'm fine with just a, a simple motion to allow the city manager and I to move forward in trying to put together a plan that we could bring forward, and I think that was the motion I was making.
That's a motion I made.
Was that not part of the resolution?
Right, and, and it differs, I, I laid out both options.
I made a motion.
And whatever we want to do, we could either go by what the resolution says, or just by what motion is made from the NIs. I'm, I'm good either way. Again, the bottom line is, we're, you know, I'm not trying to, I'm trying to do anything other than have the ability to explore this, and, you know, if, if?
And I, and I'm fine with letting you have the ability to explore, I'm fine with that, but I just want to have it on the record?
Sure.
That it will be brought back before the council?
It, it has.
Before any action, any further action taken.
It has to, it has to.
And that was my motion today.
I understand, Mr. Manning, but I'm talking to the mayor, excuse me, I'm talking to the mayor.
Okay, we, we can certainly clarify that and, and make it, you know, absolutely have it highlighted in the, in the minutes, that, that it will definitely come back to this council for a final approval. Just like, and, and frankly, anything that gets put together, you know, it, it would have to go, if the county's involved, it's going to have to go through the county commission as well, and, and really where it was, it would have to go through the IDB, so there's, there's still a process ahead of us.
Well, I agree that, that Camp Jordan is in the future, I mean, it could be, I've seen the conceptual drawings, and, and I think that it could really be a grand place. But, same time, fifteen million dollars is a lot of money?
Absolutely.
And, and, you know, without knowing further numbers, um, anyway, I just want to be sure that, that it can be?
Absolutely, and, and also, you know, just another note, you know, as I mentioned, the county's and the city's portion of property taxes, again, taking out the education portion of the county taxes, it's about nine hundred thousand dollars, that doesn't necessarily mean you can multiply that by fifteen, and that's how much money you can, you know, you can borrow. That's, so, it, it would definitely take finance departments on both sides working it out to arrive at, okay, what, what is, what is really possible? How do we get there?
By the way, is Senator Gordon Harris still here?
Is that right?
Uh, can you say budget? A manager has?
Mayor, this fifteen million that you're, you keep going to figure out, that's not all these treaty money up here.
No, that's a combination of county and city.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, that is not all of these years' money. Mr. Mayor, may I say something, please?
Oh, hold on, just a minute, Mr. Cagle had asked.
Well?
We'll get right back to you.
I didn't hear you talk.
I know we've had a motion in the second, but I've still, like, taken Resolution twenty-six taking immediate action, voting just the?
Motion.
The motion, I mean, the amendment to this, because?
Well, we, now, the motion was not to approve the resolution. Yeah, so, so the motion, the, the motion is simply to allow?
Have the mayor and the city manager explore this possibility, pursue it, and bring it back to the city council.
And also, I had an attorney, you know, with that.
I'm sorry, you did?
Yes, sir, I did. I didn't vote to go in, Mayor, to go ahead and do it, I voted.
So, so, yeah, you could, you could basically throw the resolution away. It was just, again, it was, exactly, that was something that, again, we put together as an example of what could be done, but again, just as effective as, as the motion was. It, it accomplishes what, what I seek to accomplish. So, again, and it's a, it's a project that will be very different from most TIF projects you see. There's no private developer who's going to benefit at all from this. This is public money being used for public improvement. And it, it benefits not just the city of East Ridge, but Hamilton County and the greater Chattanooga area. Again, there's no place in Hamilton County, no place Again, there's no place in Hamilton County, no place in this region really that could put together the kind of project that we're talking about right here. Simply because of the land. No one else has two hundred and sixty acres of park.
Eighty miles down the
Well, and that's, no, that's true. That's true, down in, what, Lake Point? So, but again, in this, in this area, there's just really not going to be anything like it. There's not anything like it. So yeah, we do have a motion and a second. Again, it is simply to allow the city manager, city attorney, and I to explore this possibility and bring it back to council and file or for approval, if you want to raise that.
We can get it for a free turn, lay up caption.
Yes, yes. Now, I sent, yeah, that was supposed to be in the packet. It was not in the packet. That's why I emailed it to everyone today and then brought a hard copy. Again, just as a an example of what can be done, but I think the motion on the floor accomplishes the same thing. Mr. Sue. We can have the roll call.
Vice Mayor Gravitt?
Yes.
Councilman Cagle?
Yes.
Councilman Manning?
Yes.
Councilman Sue?
Yes.
Mayor Laverne?
Yes.
Item G, discuss and/or take action on canceling the December twenty-seventh regular council meeting.
I make a motion that you all meet on December the twenty-second.
No, make a
Can I get a second? Councilman Manning is second.
I will second, and I will move to amend requiring all immediate past council meetings contested.
I'll be in Nashville.
I'll set your motion, man.
All right, do we, in all seriousness, do we have a motion in regard to the meeting on December twenty-second?
I'll make a motion, Captain.
Okay, we have a motion to cancel. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have our second. Roll call, please.
I'm not sure if the manager will make it to the little
Vice Mayor Gravitt?
Yes.
Councilman Cagle?
Yes.
Councilman Manning?
Yes.
Councilman Sue?
Yes.
Mayor Laverne?
Yes.
Okay, item H is the appointment to the Hamilton County Water Quality Management Committee. The appointee will be Kenny Kester.
Make a motion, prove.
Second.
A motion to approve and a second. As an alternate, we'd like to add this, as an alternate, we have to Michael, yes? Michael Howe will be the alternate. I forgot the alternate was in here. But Kenny Kester, the appointee with the alternate member being Michael Howe.
I'll make that motion for both of them.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. And a second. Okay, roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Gravitt?
Yes.
Councilman Cagle?
Yes.
Councilman Manning?
Yes.
Councilman Sue?
Yes.
Mayor Laverne?
Yes.
Thank you, sir. All right, and then the final item is a request from Jada Side to relocate a single-family dwelling from outside the city limits to three fifty-four Camp Jordan Road.
Yes, this is Ms. Glenn. Yeah, the King had brought this move in random and he was stat recommendations, and you all should be moved at night during the school bus and traffic activity, and completion of works should not exceed six months to date of approval. And the contractor must secure a bond not less than a praise value of the structure. And on the back, there's a attached map of the single-family dwelling. It's actually going to be moved, I think, from seven one twenty-seven Ivy Gap Road, Chattanooga, Tennessee, to three fifty-four Camp Jordan Road.
Oh, yeah. That's a long distance to move, I think. Are you kidding?
He lives there.
Likes the house. Well, I'm sure, what's his name is doing, but
Donald Payne will be doing a lot of housework.
I know Donald, I know Donald very well.
Does the city provide escort service for that?
Not that I'm aware of, sir.
Don't want to do the private and we don't block the side streets or anything like that?
Never have, I know.
What we do do what we do have is the traffic. We have the traffic unit that goes out to make sure that all the lights are at the height, so when you move house in, we're not going to hit those lights at all. We charge application and fee for that.
My fault was we didn't make you run the escort service.
I don't get that.
We didn't charge that.
Is the praise value of the structure going to be in that, be a security bond?
I don't see anything of value. I don't see an approach value of this, probably I would say probably seventy-five.
Mr. Daisai is here, Jay, do you have it? I'm a little afraid of that.
Of course, I know the movement. Plenty of insurance, but the guy just went to move times. Yeah. And I just question about this price value.
Yeah, four hundred and sixty, seventy.
Sixty, seventy thousand dollars.
Excuse me, gentlemen, with the light?
Yes, sir.
Donald Payne, more likely to be the one moving structure. And moving structures in East Ridge, what they have done before is to put up a cash bond or just a blood check with you or whatever it may be. We've never had an incident, never had any type of trouble resulted in, you know, default or anything. So, the city, I am required by the state to provide blue light escorts on either exceeding sixteen fifty-three and width or height. I do hire all duty officers in support of the CDB's street, which I pay them a fee, I think, for twenty-five dollars per hour. They are not involved in the movement in any way, merely for the safety of the public and also us having hidden out trucks and various things.
Are they in city vehicles?
Excuse me?
Are they in city vehicles?
Yes, yes. We also provide our own escorts, yellow light, flags, and everything. And this is statewide, I mean, from Chicago to Tampa, Florida, every city I'm in, that's the way. Or I can get county officers to come into the city if they would prefer. And that has been another policy for years, to move house from the city of East Ridge to any other county inside of the state. The officers that started with us would take us to that destination. There had to be some controversy, so since we're coming from Chattanooga, whichever you prefer, I can have my officers there, bring us into East Ridge to the destination, totally, totally due discussion. And I did have a bond with me.
We prefer that our officers
Say that again?
We prefer that our officers, our officers don't participate. We can afford that. You're talking about moving it from
From the city of Chattanooga.
Say city will come in?
Yeah.
Oh, Mr. East Ridge, it's that city.
I just have some questions, Chief, come up here. Are you talking to that Chattanooga to the line and then the city of East Ridge?
They'll come all the way in? Fine, or pound two?
What have we done, what have we done in the past to this?
Did you show up?
In the past, I've worked for Donald Payne.
I understand that.
We have went both to the city boundary and been picked up by Chattanooga or Hammond County. Once it comes to our city, we picked it up. The highway patrol is running it in before. There's been multiple ways that it has been done. Generally, you want to keep one of our officers or a county officer in our jurisdiction. And it is off duty. And all we do is run the blue lights and stay ahead of them, behind them, just to make sure the traffic that are coming up on is aware that there is a road jockey or if they come up behind us, that they can't do any further. Are you blocking side streets? No, we're not blocking side streets. We just stay ahead of it and behind it, just to maintain traffic. That's the reason they want to move it during the hours that's recommended. It's the light of traffic.
I'll make a motion, prove.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve.
That option there.
Have you scoped out an area which way you're going to bring it into active living, if you have?
Yes, in numerous cases.
All right.
So can we have the city meet us at the boundary and then we go from there? We don't have to start with them? Well, no, we wouldn't have to. Chattanooga would work with Mr. Payne to get them to our city limits and then we take over from there. Let's do that.
That's right, that's right, yeah.
That's why I put my motion there.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve. Any questions, councilmen? Roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Gravitt?
Yes.
Councilman Cagle?
Yes.
Councilman Manning?
Yes.
Councilman Sue?
Yes.
Mayor Laverne?
Yes.
Thank you. That is all that we have on our agenda for tonight. I encourage everyone to be here, if you can, on Monday night for our swearing-in ceremony. It starts at six-thirty, correct? Six-thirty on Monday night. Hope to see you all there. Have a good evening.